I'd like to call the Spokane City Council Meeting Briefing Session to Order for March 1st. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Mr. Ormsby here for the Advanced Agenda? All right. I'm not seeing Mr. Ormsby, but we can start without him. Looking for next week, March 8th Consent Agenda. Purchase from Western State's Equipment. Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon. This item is the purchase of a hydraulic hoe ram to be used on our track hoe. We use this for hoe ramming rock for a lot of our excavations. This was bid, was spec'd out off of a state contract and awarded to Western State's CAP.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Next, Item 2 is a contract extension, annual licensing fees with MBS Government Finance Group, and that would be Jake Hensley.
Hello. Good afternoon. This is for a contract extension with DFAST, which is our lid billing software and assessment tracking.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Jake? All right. I see Mr. Ormsby.
Council President. Yeah. Sorry, I'm having some X problems today. Sorry about that.
It's all right. No worries. We didn't get behind.
Item 3.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, good. So, Item 3 is a grant agreement for the fire department to buy a Hazmat equipment truck and some equipment, and Chief Williams is here to present.
All right. Let's see. Is that... Chief Williams? Are you there? I see you. Okay. How about now? Speak up.
He's on vacation.
Chief Williams, you're not connected to audio. I see you, but you're not connected to audio for some reason.
Well, actually, Council President, I can probably present this, although if there's any questions, we'll have to defer maybe to Chief Williams following up. But this is a grant agreement with the Department of Ecology to purchase equipment and an equipment truck for Hazmat equipment, and it also relates to a special budget ordinance that will be presented later on this agenda, both for action next week.
Okay. And we discussed this, I think, last week, so...
Yes.
That's great. Okay.
Next is a proposed master site agreement with a Vista for power charging stations, and Mike Piccolo next to me here will present this item.
Yes, the council was briefed at one of its committees on October, I'm sorry, this past month, February... So, if there are any other further questions, I can re-brief this item or answer any questions.
Okay. Next, we have two contract amendments that Lars Hendren from Sewer is going to present. One, to audit the NLT project at the Riverside West Park Reclamation Project, and also Jacob's Engineering Contract for the same facility. Lars?
Thank you, and a good afternoon to all. Yes, the first item is an amendment to our existing contract with OAC Services. OAC provides guidance to us as a consultant for GC CM projects, which is the NLT style of delivery. We're about five years into construction, nearing completion, and by statute, we are required to perform this audit. The audit will confirm proper accruals, and it will also establish the final closeout change order. OAC will conduct this audit, and they will guide us through the closeout process. Are there any questions on that item? Hearing none, I will proceed to the second. This is also a set of amendments with our existing CH2M Hill contract. CH2M has been the engineer for the NLT for the past five, almost six years. The construction will be finishing up, it's nearly done, will be finishing up this summer, and then we'll initiate a one-year-long monitored test period. This is the period in which the vendor of the membrane facility is on board to help us dial it in and make sure that it performs exactly as designed. Four out of the five amendments to the CH2M contract provide engineering services for this monitored test period. I should mention those are as needed, but we may not use all of it. Amendment #22 extends the quality assurance role that CH2M has to manage the construction completion through the summer. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that item as well.
Okay. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to Item 7, which includes three agreements that Mike Sloan from IT is going to present to the council.
Good afternoon, Council, Council President. Item A of this, all three of these are renewals for support contracts. Item A is with Oracle and Primary, this is for PeopleSoft product. This asking approval for $207,462.28. That is based on annual increase that we've contracted with Oracle in this long-standing contract, and although it doesn't meet our guideline of the 3%, it is a 4% increase, but it was in a contract that had been established previously. Item B is with Highland Software, it's for our on-base system. Again, it's an annual renewal cost. This is slightly higher than last year by only a couple hundred dollars, so there were some licenses we didn't need to use, so we adjusted it, so we're asking for the approval of amount of $68,041.67. And then, Item C is with Aztec Assistant for City Works. Again, this is an annual renewal, and this is just slightly above what we had contracted last year. We had an amendment last year because we added a couple departments, so we had an increase in licensing, and this aligns to cover those as well, so we're asking for the approval for $135,036, including tax. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Then we come to the next two items on the agenda, which are placeholders. The first for the report of the mayor, impending claims and payments, and also payroll for with and without parks and libraries. And then finally is the placeholder for city council meeting minutes. Both of those items will be filled in in advance of the meeting next week. Moving then to the legislative session at 6:00, there will be two recommended appointments to the Human Rights Commission.
But, Mike, just before you go there, I was just going to ask here in the room here, are those reappointments, are they new? Have we interviewed them? I'm just checking.
I think one's an appointment and one's a reappointment.
Okay.
They're actually, no, they are two appointments, but one of them is a person that already serves on there, but is serving in a different position. That's my understanding.
Okay.
If you give me a second, I can give you the name.
You can do it later, that's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to check that. You can continue, Mike, we'll cover that offline.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. Then we go to special budgets ordinances, which is next, and the first item involving the Criminal Justice Fund was briefed last week, but if there's any additional questions, Eric Finch.
They're about three appointments.
Mike, I'm here. As you know, Eric has been on brevetment leave. He had a loss in his family, so I am covering for Eric if there's any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Then next, we have the Fire EMS Fund Transfer that we talked about earlier, and again, if there's any questions, Tom is still here, and maybe he has audio now, but...
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, just like the Verizon ad.
I love technology.
It's great when it works.
Thank you for coming.
So, does anyone have any questions on either the SBO or the previous contract or grant agreement for Tom?
Can you send the link to Sigler for this?
Okay. Seeing none. Next, I'll move on to a series of transfers into the Arterial Street Fund, and Tanya Wallace, our CFO, or maybe Michelle Hughes, oh, Tanya is on the phone. So, Tanya Wallace is here to present that item, and I think it's been discussed before, but responding to any questions that council may have.
Yeah, council, this has been discussed before. This is the proceeds of the Normandy sale, and those proceeds are just in asset management fund, and we'd like to transfer them into the funds where the costs have actually been incurred, for the Schwartzplex agreement, and then the Gork Trail. Are there any questions? Hopefully, there were some questions before, and I think we provided more detailed information. If there are further questions, we'd be happy to take those.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya. Next, we'll move on to the Emergency Rental Assistance Fund, and this item was discussed last week as well, but I see Michelle Hughes is present in case there's any additional questions or issues that the council would like to raise.
Good afternoon. Sorry, my video's not working. Thank you very much. The first one is Ordinance 36019 is in disregard, is just establishing the budget in the Rental Assistance Program Fund so that we can program it out. Any questions?
I was just going to add in, this is the money from the United States Treasury from the bill that was passed in late December, and if I understood correctly, earlier today, CHHS has sent out a RFP, they posted the request for production, request for proposals to agencies that might be able to distribute that money once we get it, and there's a whole scoring process for that, and then we'll have to get into the details of what those programs look like and what conditions go with the money on that. But we'll be hearing a little bit later today, a little more from Tim Sigler about the state money that's also coming, but that's totally different than this money.
Correct.
All right.
I'm going to have to apologize because I missed the first part of your deal, because we're passing speakers back and forth with Tanya, so is there a question that I missed?
I don't think so. I think we're at 36, oh, 20 now, so...
Okay. That ordinance is to establish budget for the loan proceeds for the East Spring project. So, it's just establishing budget to draw the funds, create the loan, and then transfer it to Arterial Street to develop the project. It's actually exactly decided, the resolution in the next section of 2021, 0016, for the SIF loan.
And, Michelle, why don't you just, since we're on that item, just go ahead and present the SIF loan, which is an LTGO bond for Phase 2 of the Spring project. Why don't you just go ahead and ease into that as well?
Sure. I forgot to check out what the interest rate is to give you that information today, but it's a five-year treasury rate plus 50 basis points, and it will be amortized over a total of five years, and we'll be using future sales tax revenue earned into the U District to make the debt service payment on that loan.
Any questions for Michelle? Next, then, we'll move on to a sole source provider resolution for Dresser Rand, who provides the equipment for the Waste Energy Plant, and this is a value blanket order for a not-to-exceed amount, and Chris Averit is here to present this item.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm seeking approval for a sole source resolution and two-year value blanket worth $1,800,000 with Dresser Rand. They're the OEM of the turbine and generator at the Waste Energy Facility. This value blanket is needed to purchase parts for the periodic overhaul of the turbine and generator scheduled to occur in 2022. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And finally, and I'm here on Sam's behalf, to request approval of a settlement of a claim for a flooded basement on a residence on Overblock Drive, which actually occurred last year, and it was a relatively complicated repair in that it took a fair amount of time, but we finally accomplished it, and both the property owner and the contractor would appreciate an expedited payment on behalf of the city, which we certainly want to accomplish, so we will be asking next week for approval of this resolution so that we can go ahead and pay and settle that claim. How many questions?
I just, just probably how much?
And then...
How much is the claim?
Pardon me, Council President?
I just said, how much is the claim?
Oh, actually, the claim was for about $120,000, but we actually were able to accomplish the repairs for $78,265.
Great.
And then, the last item is an ordinance that I think, I don't believe Carly is still with her, she had an appointment, but I think, Council President, you probably know as much about this topic as anyone, and I think there was a request to defer for additional discussion in any event.
Yes, I'll update folks. So, we've continued to get public feedback on the, essentially, the rates of reimbursement for parades and other special events, and gotten some good ideas from police, including kind of setting some standard templates for how long a parade is, how much, distance-wise, how much, how long of a time, what kind of crowds are usually expected, so that people can kind of pick from the suite of what they can afford, but Carly really wants to reach back out to the sponsors of the various events one more time, and just make sure that we're all on the same page and understand it. So, she's requested that we defer this ordinance till April 12th. I'm looking for a motion to defer until April 12th.
Still moved.
Councilwoman?
Second.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about the deferral?
I apologize, I missed who moved.
Oh, was that Councilmember Mum who moved? Yes.
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 Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of deferring till April 12th indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred.
And, Council President, members of the council, that concludes the proposed agenda for the meeting of March 8.
Okay. And I have one other potential change that I heard from Integrated Capital Management, and on Item 13 on today's consent agenda, this is the completion of the Centennial Trail. Still haven't gotten a ruling from the appeal on which bidder is qualified, and so they have asked that we defer that for one more week to March 8, and I thought we could do that here so that we could then approve the agenda for March 8. So, is there a motion to defer Item 13 from today's consent agenda, the low bid of Halmey Construction for the Centennial Trail until March 8?
Still moved.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded?
Council President?
Yes.
I just had a question. Where is this again?
Where's the location? Yeah, it's in the West Central. It is from where the Centennial Trail ends right now, I want to say it's on A Street, right where it goes down to Sansui, and then from there to Pettit Drive.
Okay, so, I was under the impression we had to do this quickly. Is this going to jeopardize, don't we have a grant from somewhere to finish this?
I don't, I don't think we're in danger of that, but maybe there's someone on the line.
Council President, I could speak to that. Councilwoman Burke, if the contract is continued much longer, it may be that all bids would just be rejected at this point, because I think as Councilwoman Burke was able to bring out last week, we've only got two contractors. One's already been disqualified, and if we don't hear quickly on this one, I think ICM and Engineering Services will probably just go back out to bid a second time, and they believe if they can have the contract awarded by the end of May, they would have sufficient time to complete the project this year, but you're right, we either need to complete the project this construction year or seek an extension from the granting agency because they've already given us one. So, timing is important, but I think construction time on the project is probably, I think Dan brought 90 to 120 days, which means we should be able to complete it this construction season if the bid can be let by the end of April.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ormsby. I just am worried about this because this is a really awesome project that I want to make sure happens and comes to fruition, so...
Yep. Any other questions or discussion? All right. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of deferring this matter for one week until March 8th indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? All right. Then, that said, is there a motion to approve the agenda for March 8th as modified?
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. March 8th agenda is approved. That brings us to March 1st, and let's see, there's a couple of requests. One, I'm just going to ask Madam Clerk to talk to us about Item 16 on the consent agenda because it's always a little out of the ordinary for us of what we're doing with initiatives, so if you could talk to us about that.
On February 4, 2021, Mason Lord decriminalized Spokane, and Pat Donahue filed a proposed initiative with the office of the city clerk. Pursuant to SMC 2.02.230, the city attorney's office reviewed the measure, and in consultation with the sponsor, prepared a ballot title and summary of the measure. Per SMC 2.02.040, upon receiving this report from the city clerk, the city council may pass the measure as proposed, reject the initiative measure, and propose another one dealing with the same subject to be considered as council legislation, or submit the initiative measure to the voters on its own motion. If the city council does not pass the measure as proposed or submit the initiative measure to the voters, the initiative and the ballot title and summary of the measure will be forwarded by the city clerk to the city hearing examiner, who shall issue a formal written opinion as to the legal validity and effect of the proposed measure. Are there any questions?
So, if we don't take any action, but it's on our consent agenda, does that mean it's going to the city hearing examiner?
Correct.
Okay. So, it's not approving it or approving it on the ballot, it's just going to the city examiner, unless someone makes a motion to approve it as a law straight up or to submit it directly to the ballot without getting signatures. So, are there any motions to do either of those two things? Not seeing any. Okay. So, wanted to be clear on that. Then, Item 17 is a, there's a motion, well, I shouldn't say that, there's a potential to put the, a contract amendment with K&amp;L Gates, that's the law firm that's giving us advice on negotiating with a Vista on renewable energy sales, and we had put that on hold for a while till we had a discussion at study session or actually committee last week, which we had, so to put it on tonight's agenda, it would take a motion to suspend the rules to add it to the agenda. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to add items to the agenda of the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about suspending the rules? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. I'm an aye. Maybe if I can see your hands, I didn't catch everyone, so... Okay. Unanimous. So, the rules are suspended for adding things to the agenda. Is there a motion to add Item 17, the contract amendment with K&amp;L Gates?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding it to the agenda indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. Item 17 is added to the agenda. Then, rules are still suspended for adding to the consent agenda, and there's Item 18, which was distributed separately. We heard about it in committee. Again, this is just an approval for the CHHS Department to apply to the Washington State Department of Commerce for tenant rental assistance, and maybe, Tim, could you just repeat for any of our viewers of what the amount of money is and what the timeline is Thought I saw Tim there. All right. Well, I believe it was about $9 million, and the deadline for applying is this week, so this is just giving approval for the grant, and we don't have any details of what the conditions of it are. The State Department of Commerce was more restrictive than the federal, at least last round, but we don't know that yet, nor do we know, we don't have RFPs out for that. We have to get the, get the funds, and then we'll put RFPs out, I'm assuming. So, any discussion about, well, is there a motion to add this to tonight's consent agenda?
Still moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of adding indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay?
Aye.
Okay. Abstentions? All right. Not hearing or seeing that. Okay, abstentions? All right, not hearing or seeing that. I mean, excuse me. So that's Pat, that's on the agenda. And?
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, while the rules are suspended, I'd like to make a motion to include on our briefing session agenda, the vaccination letter that was sent out to the council a little while ago.
Okay. That's a motion. I'm taking it?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion, Councilmember Mum?
Aye. Thank you, Michael, for sending that to us in advance. And I was able to reach out to the governor's office and I think Councilmember Canir had a discussion. There is no excess vaccine to be given to us or distributed to us. That's what we're asking for in this letter. All the vaccines have been sent to individual counties. We would essentially, as I mentioned earlier, be asking another county to send us their allotment, which I don't know why we would think we should have more than other counties for our, for Capita. And likely, there isn't an access that exists in these other counties. Let's call it member Cathcart or others know where these accesses are. And I think that if we are going to send the letter, and the majority wants to send the letter, that we should say which counties we're asking for them to give us their excess vaccines and why we think our county should have it. And if we don't do that, I think this kind of appears sort of political and won't be seen as a serious request. So I encourage us to support vaccines and to find ways to do it. But I just think that this, this letter doesn't get us anywhere. And actually, I don't think it'll be taken seriously.
Councilmember, Councilmember Burke, and then Councilmember Canir.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a question for Michael. Well, and, and/or Candace, if you have the answer. So I haven't talked to the governor or anybody in their office about this, so I'm not sure what the correct answer is. But if the governor is not the right person to ask for, for these vaccines to get more, do we go, should we go somewhere else, write a letter to someone else? Because if the governor doesn't have any more, then maybe it's a mute point. But I agree, I think we need more vaccines. So I was just wondering if, if anybody knew the answer to that should be, you know, because I'm totally interested in seeing how we can get more and doing things like what the fire department was briefing us today. So, yeah, I just, I don't have the answer, so.
Councilmember Cathcart, if you want to respond to that?
Yeah, and, and thank you, Councilwoman Burke. I just wanted to say, so I think obviously the federal government could be another avenue for potential advocacy. But I just wanted to say, the reason this letter came about was I saw a presentation from Dr. Velazquez with the Health District. And he had mentioned as part of that, two, I think, really important points. One was that he felt the Health District could easily scale up to 10 times what they're providing now. And two, he very specifically said that everywhere he goes, he's asking anybody who is willing to listen, to be willing to advocate on the health of the Health District to try and plea for these additional vaccinations. And so that was where this sort of idea of just sending this letter and just letting the governor know that, hey, we're ready to stand up something bigger, stronger, we can serve a lot more folks. We're not trying to take anything from anybody else. But there is an allotment that's supposed to be coming into the state in mid-March. And so making sure they understand, hey, we are ready, prepared today, we can take as much of that as possible, I think is really, really important. And, and so that hopefully we can serve even, even more of our community and help more of those who want the vaccine to get it. So that's, that's my motivation in this. It's not political, it's nothing else. I just think it's really important that we're serving those who, who want access to it. I hear a lot.
So just on that point, though, is that in the letter, I haven't read the new version, is that like, if a new allotment comes in, in March, we are ready to take what we can get and disperse them as quickly as possible?
I'll, I'll just respond. I don't think it's spelled out quite in those, in those terms. I was just notified today of that allotment that's coming in March. But, but it does clearly spell out that the Health District has said, and the Health District has reviewed the letter, by the way, and provided some notes. But it does say that they're ready to stand up something much more substantial to provide a lot more vaccination.
I've lost track of my, was Councilmember Canir ahead of Mr. Ms. Wilkerson? Or is it Councilmember Wilkerson? You didn't, all right, Councilmember Wilkerson?
I lost track. Oh. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Councilmember Canir. I'll take it.
Okay.
So I support the letter because we do need more vaccines. And I just want to reiterate that respectfully, we don't want to take vaccines from other counties. If there are counties who do not have the capacity to utilize all their vaccines, we do not want them just sitting somewhere where they can't be. And that's just their ability to get the vaccines out there. So if that's the case, just letting folks know, Spokane has the infrastructure and the ability to utilize those vaccines that are available at this time going forward. So we are just a player and a partner in this. And I am concerned, too, that Phase 3 really might be connected to vaccines and how far we progress down that road. So any opportunity to encourage or request, Governor, if you got some extra, we would like it. But if there's other counties who need assistance, we are here to partner with them also.
Councilmember Canir.
Yeah, sorry. And I support that as well. My concern is we're going to be perceived as wanting to jump ahead in the front of the line to get more vaccines. There are counties that are much bigger than ours on the West Side. There is no secret stash of vaccines in the governor's mansion, as, as the person we talked to said, it's not hiding in his basement next to his bike. And so I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're going to be perceived as pick us first because we're ready. There, there are all kinds of counties that are ready to go as well. I don't want to be that person that jumps in line and says, us first.
Councilmember Burke.
Well, I just want to say, I don't think this letter has a sentiment of saying we want to come first before something else. So I'm going to support it. I think when the governor says that we're ready, you know, to accept more vaccines is something that I think, you know, is just a statement. It's a lot of the letters that we write, you know, in the past and, and that we'll write in the future. So I think maybe, Michael, if I could just, if we can make that small edit to just have it say something like, if new allotments come in in the future, we're ready, or something like that, just to make it sound like we're obviously not wanting the scarce amount we have now, but in the future we're ready to take action and to do more vaccines, so.
I'm going to go first, and then the Councilmember Mum will go. Yeah, I was just going to say, kind of similar, I feel like with a little wordsmithing, I would support it as well. The way I read it is it's kind of, and again, it may not have been intended this way, but people could read it this way, that somehow we're asking the governor to use discretion that he has, but he doesn't really have. And so kind of like, it's almost like his fault, we don't have enough. So I would love, I don't think I could support it the way it's written right now. But with a little bit of wordsmithing that makes it clear we're not saying that, and that we're simply saying, we have a great infrastructure set up, we have a community committed to getting vaccinated, and the, any advocacy you can do with the federal government to get more, and anything that you have that can come to Spokane, we're ready to go, that, I would sign that letter. I did talk to Dr. Velazquez, and he told me that our vaccination rate is above the rest of the state, which means we're getting more vaccines population-wise than the rest of the state on average. So we already are getting more, probably because we have a concentration of older people here would be my guess why we are. But anyway, if we change that a little bit, and I'd be happy to consider it on the six o'clock agenda, give us a little time to work on things. But it'd be nice to have a unanimous or close to unanimous sentiment. So I'll just throw that out. But Councilmember Mum, you were next.
I think maybe a little more time, you know, we've got just a couple hours before the meeting. I think we need to rework this, if it is the majority is going to send it. And I also really encourage coordination with our Intergovernmental Affairs Director. This is a message to the governor. And I want it to make sure that we don't unintend, you know, have any unintended consequences by this, and make sure it's actually asking for something. I'm just not real clear. So I'm still not ready to support this going on the agenda this quickly. And I'd like to rework it, send it to the Intergovernmental Affairs and put together a really solid letter to our governor.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
So Councilmember Cathcart is supporting the letter. Are you open if we get this done tonight, or would we go for as much unanimous support if it's on our agenda for next Monday night? What would, what would bother others?
I, I would much rather us be more united than not on something like this. So if there's an opportunity to try and wordsmith this and get it a little bit better, I'm more than happy to do that, so.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's, that's awesome. So we can just work on that, and we could, we could take a vote on our six o'clock and just make it a special matter and get it, get it done. We'll do it before the police contract testimony. So with that, so are you willing then to withdraw for now with our assurances that we will suspend the rules and do it later if people come that or not?
Yes, happy, happy to withdraw for that person.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, really good discussion. And just since we're all here, I just right before I got on this call, was on a conversation with, a call with the mayor and the mayor of Pullman and Clarkston and the governor's office, talking about Phase 3 and moving forward and vaccines and getting our teachers back to school. And the governor's office was very, very pleased to hear from all of us and particularly appreciated the mayor reaching out to the governor's office and just hearing of what's going on here and encouraging us on how we can move forward on all fronts, vaccines, reopening schools back in session, all that. So just wanted to let folks know that the government is listening to us and hearing from us. And it's important for us to keep talking to the governor's office. All right, I think that was all for agenda changes for tonight's agenda, which would then get us to the consent agenda.
Should we add the silver?
Oh, which one?
That was deferred from last week.
Yeah, that's already added. Yeah, yeah. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, value blanket renewal, number one of four with Core and Main, Spokane Valley, Washington, for coiled pit setter meter boxes not to exceed $350,000, including tax. Number two, two-year service contract with Evergreen State Towing, Spokane, for impounded and abandoned RV disposal services from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2022, not to exceed $250,000. Number three, sub-recipient agreement with Spokane County for the JEG 20 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program from October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2023, $65,197.35 revenue. Number four, contract amendment with Willis Towers Watson Insurance Services, Seattle, Washington, for insurance brokerage services from April 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022, $60,000. Number five, contract with Community Minded Enterprises, Spokane, to operate the city's community access television channel, CMTV 14, as part of the city's cable franchise agreement with Comcast Cable, from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, $65,000. Number six, designation of KSPS Spokane as administrator of cable PEG funds under Section 19, Subsection B of the city's cable franchise, from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, $65,000. Number seven, value blanket with Two Rivers Terminal, LLC, Pasco, Washington, to supply critic acid, citric acid 50% to Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility, from March 1, 2021 through February 28, 2024, $330,000 plus applicable taxes. Number eight, contract renewal, number one of two with Camaro Water Solutions Incorporated, Lawrence, Kansas, to supply liquid aluminum sulfate to Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility, from April 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022, $2,188,600 plus applicable taxes. Number nine, contract renewal, number one of two with Polidine Incorporated, Riceboro, Georgia, to supply polymer to Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility, from March 1, 2021 through February 28, 2022, $449,000. Number 10, contract extension, number four of four with Brands Safeway Services, LLC, Spokane Valley, Washington, from April 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022, not to exceed $450,000 plus tax. Item number 11, contract amendment and extension, number one of two with Diffco Incorporated, Spokane, Washington, for scheduled and unscheduled maintenance on the HVAC systems at the waste energy facility, from March 1, 2021 through February 28, 2022, not to exceed $65,000, including tax. Number 12, contract extension, number four of four with CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated, Jacobs Engineering, Spokane, for groundwater monitoring and report writing services for the North Side and South Side landfills, from March 10, 2021 through March 9, 2022, not to exceed $49,000. Item number 13 has been deferred to March 8, 2021. Number 14, report of the mayor pending eight claims and payments to previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through February 19, 2021. Total $6,594,272.47 with Parks and Library claims approved with respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $2,277,733.77. B, payable claims of previously approved obligations through February 20, 2021, $7,113,296.22. Number 15, city council meeting minutes for February 8 and February 18, 2021. Number 16, city clerk report on initiative number 2021-1 filed by Mason Lord Decriminalize Spokane and Pat Donahue regarding Spokane City silo siben mushroom decriminalization with this action to refer to the hearing examiner. Number 17, contract amendment with KNL Gates, LLP, Seattle, Washington, for legal advice and counsel to the city regarding energy productions and sales, renewable energy initiatives and options, $30,000. Total contract amount, $110,000.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the consent agenda as read? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is approved as read. And that will end our briefing session. We'll see you back at 6:00 PM. It's a relatively short agenda, except for one item, the police guild contract. So we will see you then. We're adjourned.